Good morning, San Diego. Good morning, my name is George Moore. I'm calling this a special call meeting of the B County Commissioners' Court. To order, are we recording?
Yes.
Okay. We're physically located at B County Courthouse Commissioners' courtroom, number 110, 105 West Corpus Christi Street, Beedle, Texas, 78102. That was the call to order. Moving on, discuss and consider action on the following items. Agenda item number two. B County Transportation Study Workshop to engage in interactive discussion on a strategy for transportation services and critical transportation needs with Rural Economic Assistance League, Real, Inc. Before I turn the program over, I would like to welcome everybody that's here this morning. We have Mr. Bennett Powell as a Tech dot consultant. Mr. Ornellias with Real. Thank you for spearheading this and putting it together with your team. We're looking forward, on behalf of the Commissioners' Court, we're all looking forward to engaging in this discussion today and hopefully getting, providing a clear picture for all interested parties, as well as obtaining a clear picture from Real and Tech Dot as well. So we're all coming to this today with open ears and open eyes and open minds. So thank you all. And as well, we have, and I don't have y'all's last names, so when I say your first name, if you would just, on the phone, if you'd just clearly state your last name for me, I'd appreciate that. We have Nancy.
Yes, my last name is Howen.
H O W E N?
No, I'm sorry, H O E H M.
Thank you, ma'am. And we have Donna.
Good morning, this is Donna Roberts with Tech Dot. I am the Program Services Section Director in the Public Transportation Division at Tech Dot. I'm looking forward to hearing the conversation today. Just one thing, I hope my mute button is working today. I'm riddled with cedar fever, and if I'm sneezing and y'all can hear it, let me know my mute button is not working. Thank you.
We will, Ms. Roberts, thank you. And hopefully that cedar fever starts to die down in the coming weeks. We also have Vicki. Vicki, I apologize, remind me of your last name again.
Alberghetti Masa. That's A L D R I G H T T T I S M A S A, M A P A.
Thank you, ma'am. And Vicki's with Real. And Dusty.
Yes, sir, my name is, excuse me, my name is Dusty Welch. I'm with Brian Public Transportation.
Vicki has left the conference.
I'm sorry, Ms. Welch, you're with Brian what?
I'm with Tech Dot, Brian PPN. I'm listening in on the call today.
Thank you, ma'am, welcome. And Ken.
Good morning, this is Ken Ocean with the K F H Group, and I'm listening in from up in Austin today. And I've been shut in for two days because I don't want to deal with cedar fever.
I understand. What is the K F H Group?
We are transportation consultants that specialize in rural public transit, among other things. And we work with about thirty-five rural systems in Texas and many more across the country. And we're based, our office is based right here in Austin. So we work with a lot of Texas transit systems, Real being one of them.
Okay, so you're here today with Team Real.
Judge at Budmail.
Yes, I'm listening in.
Thank you. Yes, Mr. Ornellias.
Pink is also with Real, she's our mobility manager.
I'm sorry, I didn't recognize you under the mask. Welcome back and congratulations on your new position.
Pink Rivetta.
And Ms. Rivetta, what is your title again?
Mobility manager.
Manager. My name's George Moore. I'm the B County Judge. To my left is Commissioner Sammy Farias. To my right is Commissioner Dennis DeWitt. To his right is Commissioner Christopher Link. On behalf of the county, we also have Ray Gonzalez, our Road and Bridge Administrator, April Pan Two, our Auditor, and a couple bailiffs, just in case y'all out in the audience get a little saucy. If there's nothing further, at this time, I'll turn the program over to you, Mr. Ornellias or Mr. Powell, you're standing up. So I think you're probably the one that's ready to hear enough.
Yeah, although I would give some, an opportunity to Martine, if you would like to make any opening remarks.
Two seconds. First and foremost, we're honored to be able to have the opportunity to work with the county leadership and really supporting the envisioning of a transit system that benefits the residents of the county. Our hope is that we take the opportunity that's before us, where we can truly see where we can go in servicing the county residents, continuing those that are being served, and expand to ensure that we continue improving the quality of life. We're excited. We're here also as a resource, and I'm pleased to say that we have the support of Tech Dot on the call. They try to be here in person, but unfortunately that's not possible. But technology does bring them here, and so they're also here as a resource for you. Should any questions beyond our understanding need to be cleared up, they would be available to do so. So today, we're here as participants in this workshop, and it's in the hands of the facilitator that will take us from there.
All right, thank you, Martine. Really appreciate that. To echo what Martine said, we really appreciate you all taking some time out of your day to listen to us and to participate with us. Actually, we're going to listen to you more than anything today. This is just a general outline of our agenda today. Luckily, Judge Moreau took care of the introductions. So we can move through that quickly. Today, we're just going to do a quick overview of what the purpose of the workshop is. We'll talk about some current and future conditions in B County that pertains to passenger transportation and public transit. I'll give you some of the new service typologies that are being employed in rural areas around Texas and around the country that have yet to be employed here, and talk about some of the new innovative ways to move people. And then we'll open it up to a discussion, mostly with the Commissioners, but anybody in the room, obviously. And let's keep this informal. You know, if there's, if you have a question about any of the slides while I'm presenting, I'm going to try to keep the presentation pretty concise and get to the conversation as quick as possible. But if you have a question or some input, anytime, feel free to interrupt me. No offense will be taken, that's for sure. The purpose of today's workshop, we're really looking at, you know, talking about what the future of public transit in B County can be. With kind of an emphasis of moving away from kind of nineteen-nineties service model, which is what is being employed in most of rural America and currently in B County. We want to understand what the context is and what the conditions are in B County. And then we really want to engage the Commissioners' Court in identifying needs for residents, what you all think kind of the mobility needs are for residents, and then parlaying that into developing a vision or some sort of actionable plan to move forward. Real is in the midst of kind of a variety of different planning efforts, be that, you know, service planning or coordination planning. And engaging you all is the essential part in kind of guiding those plans. You have a leadership in the county, you have an understanding of what residents need, and so we need your input to move these plans forward. Current conditions here in B County, especially as it pertains to Real's service. Real is a twenty-four-hour-in-advance reservation rural demand response service, meaning you need a ride somewhere, you need to call at least twenty-four hours in advance or the day before your ride, and schedule your trip just from your house to your destination. It's curb-to-curb transportation. Beebeal is the, obviously, the major destination in this county here. But as you can see in this map, this is a map of all the origins that Real picks up in. And so you can see Beebeal is kind of the main hub. B County is kind of the main hub in the northern portion of their service area. It's where most of the action is happening in the northern area of their service area. There's a lot of need to come into Beebeal, a lot of need for transportation services in Beebeal. People come into Beebeal from the rural areas often to go shopping, access a job, or particularly for medical appointments. And then residents in Beebeal also need to get to places like San Antonio and Corpus Christi, often again for specialized medical appointments in which Real does an excellent job in taking them, those long distances. Beebeal also has, you know, some industry here. It has Coastal Bend College, which we'll talk a little bit about more today. So those are, those are what we would call major trick generators, reasons why people come to an area. Looking a little bit more in depth of some of the data that Real provided for us. B County is a real important mix, and a real important location for Real services. I know that they took over service in B County. When was that, Martine? Do you know?
I think it was twenty-four.
Somewhere in the early teens, from, you know, a system that was really outgoing by the wayside. And it's quickly become one of the busiest and most productive systems in the Real service area. Of the eleven counties that they serve, B County is in the top three of services provided and is really, you know, next to their home county, where their home base is in Alice, is really kind of the most productive. And productivity is something that really drives a lot of what we're trying to accomplish and help them accomplish, and they're trying to accomplish in service planning. And that is, that's the last column there, is passenger trips per revenue hour. And we'll talk a little bit more about how productivity really drives costs for a system like Real.
If I can make a special note in the data you're seeing, it's current data, the last twelve months. So it is under COVID conditions and context where our ridership went down from almost three hundred thousand to about seventy-five thousand a year. Nonetheless, in the lower trip data that you see, it still reflects the priorities that we've seen that B County plays in our entire service delivery model.
Yeah, thank you. And that's an important note that, you know, that's very typical across the country right now that it's, as the pandemic has hit communities, it certainly affected public transit ridership. Is fewer people are making trips as they were before the pandemic started. Another interesting thing about B County and Beebeal is there's some intercity bus service that comes through town here. Currently, there's, well, prior to the pandemic, there were two regularly scheduled intercity bus routes that come through Beebeal. One was a Greyhound route that came from the valley that was going to San Antonio, and one is an omnibus route that's coming from Laredo going to Houston. The omnibus route does not stop in Beebeal. It passes through without stopping. The Greyhound bus does, and there's some other charter buses and some kind of intercity or regional buses that don't run on grid, come through Beebeal. There's no centralized place for these buses to stop. You might have seen them parked at gas stations on the outskirts of town and things like that. And so Beebeal's really a crossroads. And to allow B County residents more mobility options, trying to create a context in which there's seamless connections with the intercity network and maybe places for intercity buses to stop would be key, especially, you know, if they're trying to get to places like Houston to visit families or anywhere within the state, or the nation for that matter. So let's talk about some kind of service possibilities and what, what, what kind of menu of options there are. And some of them might be good for Beebeal, some of them might not. And then you might even have some ideas that I don't talk about here that would be even better. The rural demand response twenty-four-hours-in-advance scheduling system is really something that came heavily into fruition in rural transit in the nineteen-nineties. And it's kind of time to step away from that. We're looking at, is there ways to improve productivity without increasing operational costs? So basically, cost-neutral changes that can be made. They can transport more people for the same amount of money. Technology is also something that's driving some of the innovation now. And yes, while technology is a, you know, an added expense, it's a capital expense usually one-time or a low expense, and there's significant federal assistance for capital expenditures when it comes to public transit. One of the things we're seeing employed in rural communities similar to Beebeal in Texas is what they call mobility-on-demand or micro-transit services. Think Uber, Lyft, but a shared ride, basically. And so instead of having to, you know, call dispatch the day before you want to make your trip or three days before you make your trip, you pick up your smartphone and have an app that allows you to push a button, and usually there's a thirty-minute response time in a community like this. And it can take you anywhere, let's say, in the town of Beebeal. It's important to understand that not everybody is using smartphones in rural communities, so there's always an ability to call in and get that service as well. The thing that we like about this, it's convenient, it's attractive to a lot of types of riders. Certainly, students at Coastal Bend would be more receptive to this than the traditional rural demand response type of service. It uses small vehicles that are a little bit nimbler, can get into places. And it's kind of most appropriate for places that are no smaller than Beebeal. So, you know, really small communities might not have the demand. The thing that is great about these is because the technology kind of schedules it, there's an algorithm that kind of gets the buttons out in the road and tells the driver who to pick up next, we see significant productivity increases. Where rural demand response service, if you're getting two trips an hour, which Real does here in B County and in some of their other counties, that's really good, actually. We're seeing four to six trips an hour using these things. We're seeing this employed in communities like Bassdrop and Maynard, kind of in the central Texas area, with really good success. So that, this is one idea that might work for the community. You know, strategies for the future could include maybe mobility-on-demand services, micro-transit in Beebeal, status quo service in certain areas, fixed schedule services, which I'll talk about in the next slide, which is very similar to the rural demand response, but it's employed with the idea of getting more productivity. And then looking at scheduled inter-county services or van pools. This can be, you know, particularly, van pools can be particularly good for residents that are going to major employment sites in or outside of county or coming into the county, especially for second or third shift jobs. If people are having trouble accessing employment and employers need second, third shift employees, transit often can't really solve it. You can't run a bus at two in the morning for a shift change. But you can run a van pool, which is essentially, you know, a van that is driven by the employees themselves, and they go around and pick up people in their neighborhood and go to things like that. That's something that can work really well for that. Marketing is also important. You know, rebranding services, especially if they're different services from the ones you're typically providing, is important to differentiate that. And also understanding that, you know, kind of everybody has a white cutaway van. This blue van, this blue bus on the bottom is what we call in the transit business, a body-on-chaffed vehicle. You know, senior center, human service agencies, hospitals, they all have a white one of these. And if you want to kind of distinguish yourself from things, you want to have a nice logo. The picture at the bottom is a rural system we work for in central New Mexico. Their system is called N C R T V, North Central Rural Transportation District. Nobody calls it that, that's a mouthful. The blue bus, because they paint all their buses blue. Everybody knows exactly what the blue bus is. The service up top is the mobility-on-demand services that are being employed in Bassdrop. And those buses look different than their rural buses or their intercity buses. So it's important to make distinctions in your service and make sure you look good to the community. You know, it's not a one-size-fits-all, and I'm not saying that micro-transit services are right for Beebeal. Maybe they are, maybe they aren't. But really trying to have service designs that meets the needs of the community. Yeah, on-demand service in Beebeal with a thirty-minute response time, that could be really beneficial to the people here. Fixed schedule service, and I know this is hard to see, but this is an example of carts. What they do is fix schedule. So it's the same thing. It's twenty-four-hour-in-advance rural demand response service. But if you're doing that for kind of one trip at a time, this is when it becomes impossible to get more than one trip an hour because you're driving long distances between two counties and you have one person on the vehicle. So what carts does is say, this is their Caldwell County schedule. If you live in Lockhart and you want to go to San Marcos, well, that bus leaves, that service goes every Monday, Wednesday, and Friday. And there's kind of a timetable there, too. So people that know, hey, I need to go to the doctor in San Marcos, or I want to go to the outlet malls in San Marcos, they know that those, the days that the bus leaves Lockhart to do that, Monday, Wednesday, and Friday are news to the time. So instead of taking one person, you're taking three, four, or five people in the vehicle. And that's something that's been, you know, employed for, you know, twenty, twenty-five years with pretty, pretty good success in terms of increasing productivity over the, over the current service model. And then seamless connections to not just the intercity bus network, but any other regional services that come through. Connections are key, and timed connections, seamless timed connections are key. You don't want people waiting around. You don't want people having to be on a bus for three hours when they really only need to be on a bus for forty minutes, things like that. Those are the things that hurt ridership. And so you want transit vehicles to be able to meet each other at a time, at the central location of the time place in order to transfer from one service to another. Now, obviously, money is always an issue with kind of any program, and it's no different than for Real. The nice thing about Real is, you know, they're being proactive in ways to expand services and look for money. It doesn't mean that we're coming to the county commissioner and saying, hey, we need money to support services. We like to be creative about how we find local support. And a lot of that comes with sponsorships and partnerships. We've seen a lot of success in Paris, Texas. They got a significant fixed route bus system off the ground there, in large part due to the hard work of the transit manager there to engage the hospital, the junior college there, and get sponsorship and advertising revenue to help support those services. We know that H E B has sponsored shopper shuttles in the past. Walmart, and the Walmart Family Foundation is allowing their regional managers to help support transit services in certain contexts. Sometimes that's funding a service, sometimes that's building a stop or a station. But like we like to say, who's, you know, who's got more money? B County or the Walmart Family Foundation? You know, so engage, engage those that have money. Local businesses might support a micro-transit service if they can, you know, wrap a bus or put an advertisement on the bus. F T A funding, Federal Transit Administration funding, is in abundance right now. A lot due to the CARES Act, and so that might not be always available, but there's usually grant funding available in some form or another. There's the traditional grants that are used to fund rural transportation, transportation for people with disabilities and the elderly. But there's often new grant programs that come out one-time sometimes, and it's always good to be aware of that money. And then, like we said, we want to start with changes that are cost-neutral from the operating perspective. Going from a twenty-four-hour-in-advance wide-open rural demand response system to something like a fixed schedule, where you're saying, okay, we go to San Antonio from Beebeal every Tuesday and Thursday at these times for medical appointments, can increase your productivity, basically decrease the cost per trip. Let's say, you know what your cost per hour is back in the necking right now?
About fifty-five, sixty bucks, let's say sixty dollars.
If you're transporting one person to San Antonio, you know, that trip is at least sixty bucks, maybe a hundred twenty dollars. If you, you know, you transport two people, you cut that cost in half. You transport four people, you cut even that in half. So the more people you can get on the bus, really, the more money you're saving. The costs are relatively fixed. Yeah, fuel changes, but to have a nice vehicle, a professional driver, you know, that cost is relatively fixed. The way you save money is transporting more people.
So that's basically how Real survives?
Yeah. Yeah, is transporting as many people as they can.
No, no, you're sponsoring through grants or something.
Yeah, grants, yeah, yeah, that's what the dollars count for. Yeah, for the most part. They work through F T A grant programs, they get state funding and things like that, and local funding where they can.
With the exception of one county, Livock County does make an annual financial contribution of forty-seven thousand dollars to subsidize the fares of the residents out of Livock County. Eighty percent of their fares are covered with a subsidy. The residents only pay twenty percent. A number of those, as you saw in the earlier chart from Livock, are coming into B County, not just Beebeal, but other national churches.
One thing I'd like to revisit, when you talk about your fixed costs of fifty, sixty dollars an hour, I realize when you said that it's lower when you say more people, that's really not correct, because it's a fixed cost regardless of the number of people.
Sure.
So we need to clarify that.
Yeah, 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 so the cost is not, the cost is fixed, but the cost per trip becomes much lower.
Cost per person.
Cost per person, yeah.
Yeah, but fixed cost is fixed.
Yes, 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 yeah, yeah, yeah. Sorry for any confusion there, yeah.
So, Ms. Ornellias, how many people do you have on staff here?
Right now, we have three. Three that are working out of this facility, right?
You have three people, and vehicles, or is that drivers or three on staff?
Three drivers. Three drivers that specifically initiate the trip out of this county, right?
And transportation vehicles?
We have about twelve vehicles at the map. It varies, depends on the retention of staff. With COVID, staff are coming in and leaving. So it depends, number of staff that come out of this county at any given time.
Twelve vehicles, company-wide, not twelve vehicles in B County?
No, company-wide, I'm sorry. Company-wide is eighty-two vehicle fleet out of B County. We have about twelve vehicles that are stationed out of B County at any given time.
So that entails all your funding, administrative costs, paid per hour, your all salary and things like that, all expenses, all maintenance operations?
Everything, that is correct. The operating costs are determined, all the funding we receive and the accounting we do on a form that's called C T N one-twenty-eight, and that generates the operating service on any given month or any given quarter or at the end of the year.
Do those drivers live in B County?
From those, I don't believe any of the drivers live in B County. Not right now. We are partnering with Workforce Solutions of hosting future training for drivers out of Beebeal, but that hasn't come to fruition yet. We only have one potential applicant, and I believe as of this morning, they are going on a training in our main office in Alice.
So there's federal support, we talked about that. And now is definitely a time to look for federal support opportunities to support transit services. This is particularly true for capital costs, which technology, let's say, micro-transit technology, on-demand technology would be considered a capital cost. Generally, the federal government will cover eighty percent of the cost of capital purchases, like replacing vehicles and things like that. So twenty percent of the funding has to come from local or state sources. Sometimes it can be even better than that, depending on if... depending on if you're, you know, if you're doing something that, that FTA really wants you to do, maybe looking at different fuel typologies or, or technology that's striving for productivity. And, uh, you know, so local support is always, is always needed. Bee County can get more than kind of the baseline services that Real pays if there's additional support for that, or there's needs, which is one of the things we'll talk about today. And that can come from a variety of, of ways. It's not always, you know, cash from, you know, the general fund in the county. You can use in-kind match. There's a lot of different ways to be creative with that. Private partnerships, sponsorships is a way that we really like to try to steer clients to go. And the National Academy of Sciences has a, a transportation research program that looks at a variety of different transportation issues. Basically, if you can think of a topic that relates to transportation and transportation planning, they've written a report on it. And those reports basically say that for every dollar invested in, in public transit, there's a three-fold return on that investment, usually in being able to give people to employment, ability for employers to get employees there, people being able to make appointments on time, get to preventative medical appointments, things like that are, are what really drives that return on investment. So now I, I want to, you know, open it to everybody here in the room, particularly the, the commissioners, of course, and talk about, you know, what you see as, as the need for mobility options in the county, in Beeville and in Bee County. Taking into consideration people that need transportation services the most, and people that might not have access to a vehicle for some, some reason or another, students, people that are, that are older in age, maybe needing to get time to get meal centers, or commuters. Another big issue, I think, in, in rural Texas right now. And, and if any of the, the new types of services, or if you have any ideas on types of services that might be, be good.
Do you have a graph or a chart to show who's using the service and how many times, like a thirty day, say?
Heat map.
Yeah. Okay, say, say November of last year. Okay, what, who used the transit in November?
Yeah, we, you know, Martina, I'll defer to you. I can go back a little bit to that. The, the heat map, it, it doesn't break it down by trip type.
Seven trips.
Yeah. Doesn't break it down by trip type, but this kind of shows you where people in the Real system are getting on the bus.
President of law, but you're looking at Normanna, Lita, and Pettis being key, right?
That's the people in Bee County.
Okay, Normanna, that's, if you will, that's my precinct.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, I have not had one person ask for any additional services. They're completely satisfied with the way it's working now.
Okay.
So, you know, I speak to people in North Bee County from Beeville North, and they use it quite a bit. One of the doctors going through VA and San Antonio and down the park, that's their main function, is to call, get a ride, go.
And, and get to...
And they're very satisfied with the service I'm out there.
So is there more students, or is there more people that need to go to the doctor, or what? I mean, who's using the bus?
Um...
Or is there an age group, or is there a...
I could certainly provide that information. We track it. Often, I couldn't tell you exactly who and how many, but we could provide the origin, destination, zip code, where they're going from, and to. So I couldn't give you offhand that information if you're requesting that. But I did want to comment, Commissioner, that we started receiving some calls for some residents out of Normanna and Pettis wanting to go to Pleasant. That's an area, there's a doctor's office, and a number of individuals have called recently that we've been good tracking whenever there's a request to a service location that we typically do not go to. And that's something we're currently considering, how best to respond to everything.
I was thinking, so y'all would consider adding Pleasant to the route?
Yes, just like we go to San Antonio twice a month, we're beginning to look at when it would be most feasible to be able to do.
I think it's important to point out that, that Real is in talks with, with Coastal Bend College right now. They just undertook a, a very large survey effort, which got well over six hundred responses, kind of talking to students about what their mobility needs are. And, and the responses kind of range. Most students are independently mobile, have their own vehicle, and I think it was what, eighty, a little over eighty percent? I was just, I hadn't seen the data until just before this meeting started. But they do need transportation services between campuses, you know, with different programs run out of different campuses. And so, so there were some students that, that were saying, many of that, the students were saying, if there weren't mobility options available, they wouldn't be able to get to, get to class. And so, Real is, is kind of, you know, taking the initiative to engage with them on, on seeing if there's any types of services they can develop that will help students access their, their programs they need to have.
That project?
Dollars and cents, something that just bothered me real quick. You got three drivers, 12 vehicles. How long has this ratio been like that?
It varies. It really varies.
You have all these vehicles, you got inventory sitting on the ground.
That is correct.
Three vehicles. Has it, has it been going on for two months, five years, or how do you justify having 12 vehicles on there and the maintenance and operation of that?
Um, the number of drivers that, the counties that they live in does not determine the number of vehicles that begin operating in that particular county. We have drivers in our entire fleet that begin in different places. We have drivers that actually live equal distance, Alice, Simpson, and Beeville, that depending on the trip demands that we have the, the next day, is where we deploy them for where they begin the trip. So the three is not the number of people that operate service here. That's not how it's divided. We divide it by the demand that there is on trips. We deploy the drivers from any location to meet that demand.
Mr. Riz, where are your staging areas for the vehicle?
We have a multiple staging area. We have our principal area, which is in Alice. We have an area in Parkouria. We have an area in Simpson. We have an area in Beeville. And then we have smaller facilities in Fremont and in Miami.
And it's also important to note that generally, the, the rule is, is that you'd like to have about a twenty percent of your fleet be, be a spare, so, so that you can completely preventative maintenance without taking service off the road. So you can rotate vehicles in. So if you have, you know, ten, you know, peak vehicles, so eight vehicles that are out on the road in peak service, you would, you would want no, no less than ten vehicles total, so that, you know, if for some reason there was a breakdown, or just doing the preventative maintenance, you know, you cycle, you rotate those vehicles in. So, you know, a vehicle can get a oil change and, and a tune-up while another vehicle is out on the road.
And then, where, where is your maintenance depot for your vehicle?
Uh, we have two principal facilities in Alice and here in Beeville.
So y'all are doing all the filter changes and all that here in Beeville?
Yes. We rotate staff coming in and doing that.
Okay. Anything past all the filter changes, or is that about it?
Uh, we just do preventative maintenance on our vehicles. Other than that, we outsource it to local vendors. But I wanted to get back to a moment on the Coastal Bend College. I think that partnership is a brand-new partnership. I wish I had the data more analyzed. We just received it yesterday. We're six hundred and thirty-three responses to this transportation needs assessment, of which twenty percent, more than twenty percent, about twenty-two were Bee County residents. Eighty percent of those said they have transportation. However, when we asked the question, would transportation be a barrier to access higher education, almost forty-five percent of them said yes, it wouldn't. We want to analyze it further and see how many of those are county residents of this county, so we can better respond to those. And I know that some of the issues that have come up is wanting to connect the residents and the dormitories in Coastal Bend College into the Beeville community, and that on weekends, there is no transportation available for them. So we're looking at that very problem.
If I could follow up. I've got this in my head now, so bear with me. You're doing preventative maintenance here in Beeville, all the filter changes. Are your drivers doing that?
No, no. We have mechanic staff that come in from our facility out in Alice and do that here in our facility in Beeville. Be aware that we're constantly recruiting for staff out of every location in our service area. We just went through a series of meetings with Workforce Solutions to try to have recruiting centers in localized communities, because the recruitment and retention of drivers or any employee right now is one of our biggest challenges. The COVID situation has impacted it in such a way that currently, as I speak, we have seven drivers that are out of service, and our peak number of drivers at any given time, that means the most number that are on the road, is anywhere between seventeen and nineteen. So we are about, you know, twenty, twenty-three percent short on personnel that administrative staff is also responding to some of those trips. So that unique situation, I couldn't tell you that it is always consistent. We've had the high number of about seven employees, most of which did live in Beeville at one point, but retention, retirement, COVID has impacted that in the last two years like everywhere else. Recruitment is a huge challenge that we have, includes safety bonuses. We have COVID pay. Nonetheless, recruitment is one of the biggest challenges we have.
Have y'all gone back to, to group transit?
To, to where?
Are you, are you, are you picking multiple people up under your current COVID policy or whatnot, or?
Absolutely, yes. We, we have, we do the, the deep COVID screening on all our vehicles, and we do have some social distancing, but I think the ridership has gone low to the point where social distancing is minimally required. Other than the federal mask mandate we have on our buses, the, the social distancing is not much of an issue. But we do group trips based on the new platform we have that we've been using for the last two years that allows us to do some of the technology innovations that I spoke about, that we're getting ready for the next phase, which is the technology, the app for the passengers to do themselves, and moving more towards the on-demand type of services based on availability. But drivers is the biggest challenge that could further expand services.
And so let me ask the question and see if I understand where Real is thinking. With the, with the scheduled services like those, what you showed us from BASTRA, is, is that a concept that would be complementary to the 24-hour on-call, or would that be phased in, the scheduled service phased out?
We would see that as complementary. There will always be persons that have mobility challenges in being able to get to those pickup locations. We want to ensure that they're in control from that. So we see that as multiple strategies to expand the service.
And if I call in scheduled, as a vehicle, in 24 hours, is, there's a financial component that I would have to pay?
Yes, based on origin and destination is the fee that's been established.
Okay. And so it's open to anybody, doesn't matter what your economic...
Absolutely. It, it is public transit, that there are no limitations that students can afford the service, the frequency they use it, or anything of the like.
And how does Real analyze the financial cost, the additional, like, scheduled service above and beyond, or on top of the, the 24-hours notice services? Is there also a fee involved with utilizing that service, or is that something that's grant-funded through federal or state grants, or Real looking at that?
It depends on the type of service. If there's a service, for example, right now we're working with Coastal Bend College, and we call it Color Express. It's a pilot base. We're looking at how do we improve the quality of life of residents and access the higher education. So we're looking at specific routing to move them from one location to another, this Coastal Bend College is this specifically. Does that result in them staying in schools, receiving their degrees, getting a higher-paying job as a result of having access to transportation? In that particular grant, we were successful in getting our operation costs met to be able to deliver during this pilot phase at no cost. Our current discussions with the college are, how can we sustain the service after the fifteen-month window to be able to ensure that individuals that want to come for the high-paying training job of welding or auto mechanics that is headquartered out of Beeville, that we're able to get them from outside of Beeville proper, as well as from any other county coming into the college. Coastal Bend College has committed actively in making that happen by doing flexible scheduling of when the courses are done, that we're currently looking at what programs we're going to target to ensure that we can get a person to those training facilities, to those particular campuses, under those specific programs we'll be looking at. Whether it's EMT, whether it is lobotomy, whether it is RN or nursing, we want to make sure that we get them from pickup locations in as more reasonable groups to get them at a most cost-effective way, track our expenses, and then pursue options to sustain the service. We are looking at some of the advertising around bus ramps. Advertising allows us to reinvest that money in transit and covering our operating costs. As was stated earlier, we get federal and state funds to match federal funds under regular circumstances. We need twenty, twenty percent. We unfortunately don't always get the twenty percent of state funds to match, so we look at local contracts. We have about thirty-three contracts with social service agencies to provide trips and services to their particular clients based on the requirements that we reinvest and invest back into the system.
Just the other side, do y'all do the Meals on Wheels program?
No.
That's not part of yours?
No, no. What we've done is, during the COVID pandemic, we got the flexibility to be able to meet emerging needs, including food distribution, COVID testing, COVID vaccinations, and we provided those services and respond to what was coming to us from persons that typically would, would use our service.
The reason I was asking, we do contribute financially to Real, not to Real, but to Anna Walton, that's one shining, the Senior Meals, and that's what I was curious before that part of the program.
But I thought I heard you say you carried to Real, so that's a good one.
I missed both.
Oh, not yet, Commissioner.
Well, obviously, there's a, there's a lot of partnerships between community meal centers and public transit. There's a lot of conflict there, right? A lot, a lot of people that need to get into community meal centers don't have transportation, aren't independently mobile for one reason or another. And so rural transit in a lot of communities throughout Texas, one of their main trips is, you know, is those lunch trips, getting, getting seniors to senior centers for the, for lunch and bingo. In fact, when I do public outreach, I spend a lot of time in senior centers, helping to the people.
One of our contracts is with community action corporations out of Texas, and it was to transport, when they had to come to get meal sites, seniors into their facilities as well as throughout the entire service area. I think one thing that's really important to note is that several years ago, we saw the need to expand services in Bee based on public responses of where they wanted to go, locations they wanted to go, the frequency they were going. And so we engaged in a process of looking at the data that we have, that we look at monthly and quarterly, as well as yearly, and then found opportunities through tech stocks. There is a program called TTSC. I don't know what it stands for, but it's basically a full of consultants that tech stocks have available. We apply for a particular project to them. They assign a consultant to give us a technical document that will result in, in data to inform future decision-making. We saw the need for services in Bee County as a high priority. It is about the second or third most-served county in our entire service area. We feel we have a moral and ethical obligation to continue expanding that service. And so we sought out tech stock support and bringing technical consultants to work with us, engage county leadership, engage other community folks, and in capturing the information that we need to create a more robust transportation system in this county. Hence, where we, we come to you and ask, what do you see of the type of service that's not what is there, but could be there towards the future direction? Once we get that information, then a series of other future discussions could take place. How do we best do that? How do we meet those costs? How do we engage in, again, improving the overall quality of life of residents, not just in Bee County, but our entire service area? This is a model we're using here specifically, but we will, we will continue meeting with all other county leadership in our service area and keep them abreast. We do that with Livel County. We do that with Jim Wells in Alice. Tomorrow, we're doing a briefing for the leadership in those counties. Tomorrow, we're doing a briefing for the leadership in those counties. This is not unique to D. This is a different approach in D County because we feel, again, one of the largest served counties that we provide the service to, we want to make sure that we are responsive and that we engage the county leadership in moving us forward to meet the needs of the riding public.
Thank you, Mr. Renellius. I, you know, I'm not too creative, I guess, when it comes to public transport because when I think, you asked, when you posed the question, Mr. Powell, about, you know, what ideas do we have? The only way I can conceive of public transit in D County is to compare it to Harris County or San Antonio, Bear County, or any of those other, where there is a Corpus Christi, you know, where there is a bus system. And then that just sort of focuses my thought and my concept on where we could expand a service like this, whether there's an express need or not, would be some sort of defined route within Beeville, within the city limits of Beeville or the FETJ of Beeville to include the communities that border the city but aren't within the city to provide routine availability for movement amongst, whether it's between HEB and somewhere in the center of town, and, or I guess they should be in the center of town, the south of town, center of town, north part of town, west side, east side, you know, it's just like six or seven in a bus that moves around for that. I can see that as something that, you know, the community could benefit from and would benefit from. And then the same would also be true from our communities in the county but outside of the city of center of Beeville for the purpose of drawing them into Beeville only. So a line from Toledo and Normanna to Pettis, a line from Papalote and Skidmore, a line from Berkler, a line from, sorry, there's not a lot on the west side of the county, from Tymon, you know, into the county. And is that kind of what y'all are, I mean, I can't think of any other option?
I think what's equally important is lack of service does not imply lack of need. That may be lack of more targeted marketing to ensure that they know these services are available. Because no matter how often we inform people, we provide public transit, you will be surprised that people say, you do? And we think it's just for persons on wheelchairs. So that kind of thinking is what we're looking for. And I know that, Commissioner, in your precinct, there is a gentleman that twice a week we bring in from Normanna. What he does, his outings are, he comes in, I can tell he goes to Taqueria Chapala, right? I want to go to, I want to know. He goes all the time there, then goes to Walmart, says two or three appointments, has his first pickup, the rest is what's called, will call. Depending how long he's going to be at the taqueria, will be the next time he will call us and say, now I'm ready to go to my next location towards four o'clock. He already knows I need to get my last trip to get back home, right? That's the kind of thing, service we are doing. But we believe that there's more need that we may not be aware of that US community leaders may have a sense of the pulse of your constituents. Are there things we are not seeing that you see? Please help us to improve the services for them. That kind of thinking judges exactly what we're looking for.
The only time that I ever used it, they probably don't even have it anymore. When I went to Southwest, they had the white bus. I lived off campus, so I would catch it at the Kettle. But so would a lady with a basket going to the grocery store, it's up at the mall, it's up there. And they'd drop us off in campus with all kinds of people, right?
Right. The white bus. And this is something that we see, it's interesting you brought up kind of fixed routes as an idea. This is something that we've also been seeing, other than microtransit being employed in communities of similar size to Beeville, Paris, Texas, I mentioned, Sagin, Pleasanton, Jordanton, Havay, Havay Fixed Route. And this is also one that can be employed in an operationally cost-neutral way, right? You have three buses that are kind of doing twenty-four hour and advanced demand response, doing one to two trips an hour going around Beeville. You can take one of those vehicles out of the twenty-four hour and demand response service for the community here, run a fixed route bus that can get anywhere from seven to twelve trips an hour. And now you're, you still have the same amount of vehicles on the road. You're, like you said, your operational costs are the same, but now you're transporting, you know, several orders of magnitude more people. Now, is there demand for fixed route? Are there locations that, you know, that would have to be something that would be done kind of as another planning effort in terms of, you know, what would a route alignment look like in Beeville? But it's a good idea. Yes, it's not Houston, Beeville's not Houston, but there are certain things you can take from those service typologies that might be applicable here.
One thing I wanted to bring up while I go, and capitalism is taking care of one item. In Skidmore and in Pettis, they put dollar stores in. Because the people are used to say, man, we can't go anywhere and buy canned goods, can't buy groceries, can't buy beverages, whatever it might be. It's taking care of those two. In Pawnee now, we do have a service station, which they used to have to go to George West or Kennedy or Beeville to get gasoline and store a lot of gasoline in their garage. And they provide quite a few amenities in said service space, right? You know, people are innovative and they're coming up with ways to help take care of that. But I know y'all offer a service like the gentleman from Normanna. But some of that is kind of taken care of itself. They don't have to come all over to Beeville now and go downtown to get something that's tough. And they're well stocked, both of them are well stocked.
Yeah, for sure. I mean, those, the dollar stores and then, you know, we joke as rural transit planning consultants, you know, we come into a rural community and maybe they're hiring us to do a service design study or something like that, you know, it's like, well, where do people live and where's the Walmart? You know? That's, so, yeah, you're right, as more locations, but sometimes that can kind of reveal latent demand for transportation services.
Well, we do have some open up here in Beeville proper.
Sure.
On the south end of town.
Yeah.
So there's a need where people can walk over and get it. And I realize transportation's important, but people are pretty innovative.
Sure.
And perhaps the way that we could support is carrying, as Commissioner said, in Skidmore or Pettis, doing a targeted marketing campaign with some of the residents. On Monday, Wednesday, Friday, between ten and twelve, we're going to do a Dollar General trip. Anyone who's interested, let us know. We can pick up seven people and take them. And make it so that it's more cost-effective to them instead of possibly seven vehicles, that the one vehicle home may be needed for employment. You do it after five. Finding those ways that I hear from you, there is already capitalism. We can support it and make it more accessible to those that may have some mobility challenges. But we are making a notation of that, because that's exactly the kind of information we're hoping to obtain through this process.
And the people you target would be Pawnee, because they have no storage in Pawnee, except for the service station, which has some amenities, but it's lacking quite a bit.
And the other people to target are the HEBs, the Walmarts, and the Dollar General. Like I said, they, we've seen this in the past, you know, the HEB has funded Shopper Shuttle. You know, maybe they close a neighborhood store and build the big HEB plus out on the interstate. And the people in that community, maybe it was an Asian community, said, hey, our HEB is gone. And HEB said, okay, well, we'll fund a Shopper Shuttle service two, three days a week to circulate through that neighborhood, pick people up, bring them to the store, take them back. And so there's, you know, there's opportunities to, you know, to work with the private sector to help expand services.
I think it's worth noting that this piece of information sharing and gathering is part of a larger report that KFH will be generating. There is additional data that they have at their fingertips, including what's called a TSI Transportation Service Index.
Yeah.
What it is, that looks at density, looks at age, looks at one-vehicle households, the stability, and all those variables that help guide some decisions of where to begin targeting specific resources to support their needs. And so that information is not covered. That's just, all this picture tells you is this is a snapshot of currently, last twelve-month data. That's where we did our pickup. Now we're taking all this other technical information that they're going to gather and present to us and then be able to overlay that with feedback received through multiple sources to generate a final report that will help guide us through data with the best approach to prioritize, because we know it's not an endless pool of dollars. But we do see a window of opportunity where we can strengthen a more robust transit system for the residents of B County.
One thing that I would recommend to Real, and you mentioned it earlier, people say, well, I didn't know they had the transportation. The word not getting out that you have. I don't know whether you need to do mass mail-outs, get that phone number out there. People don't know about it. The people that do, they use it. But I would say that ninety-five percent of the population of B County doesn't know that phone number. They really don't.
Need to get a coupon on that, the HEB receipt.
Yeah.
Mr. Renellius, I would think that within, just looking within the city of Beeville itself, I think this is absolutely true for everybody that lives out in the county. It's like what brought up Pawnee and I apologize for admitting before, because they are very isolated from the city center. But all of our communities in Beeville, in B County due to the circumstance, Beeville to the greatest extent, that there would be a, we have two cab? Two cab, two cab, or just one cab?
Most one.
And they do stay pretty busy. Is there, are there, I know we have a twenty-four hour notice pickup and drop-off system in B County. Do we have a daily? If I'm, you know?
Based on availability, yeah.
Okay. I would think that especially in a community like Beeville, if the community knew that there was subsidized, and basically, I don't mean to be inarticulate, but that's subsidized transportation, you're not paying fair market now, you're the actual cost because there are some other grant monies, government funds that are offsetting the expense of running an operation like Real has. So subsidized transportation that would free them up from a flexibility standpoint, so they don't have to, if they have a doctor's appointment, that they don't have to decide in Beeville County, Wednesday, you know, or Thursday, that there would be a lot of, a lot of interest in that amongst a large subset of our population. Definitely within the city limits, but also, I don't know how you conceive of operating it within the county, but I would probably say within the county. Last minute things like, oh, God.
Yeah, so same-day service or like the app, the on-demand service generally works better in smaller zones. So a zone like Beeville would be a good one. Because if you want fifteen to thirty-minute response times, right? So if you make that the entire county, and you only have two vehicles now, you can't hit that mark. But I think, you know, same-day service, whether it's, you know, an app-based thing or just same-day dollar ride, is something that Real can, does do based on availability and marketing. These are all things that dovetail together, right? If you're going to roll out a new service, you better make sure people know about it or it's not going to succeed.
And we're taking?
If we could, like a telemarketing commercial, this is being recorded YouTube for the residents of B County.
Sure.
If you could write that phone number on your board and then pass through the county judge, we'll recite it. Come on the whole time, and then we'll have it, you know, we'll have that number out there.
Do I do it right now?
There we go.
Get your hand out.
Periodically. Let me add, six-six-eight, three-one-five-eight.
Six-six-eight, three-one-five-eight.
Yeah, but, I forgot what I was saying. Know that our, as we monitor our operating data and the services being delivered, there are variables that impact on our costs and allow us to provide on-demand service when we can do it, et cetera. One of them is what's called the no-show rate. We started about eighteen months ago monitoring our no-show when we went into this new technology. No-show is, I make a reservation and we go to Normanna. I'll use Normanna just, Commissioner, for your best, not that it's happening in Normanna. That reservation, when he makes his reservation, he goes. And at the door, say, I'm not going to go. It's only going to cost me a dollar, it's only going to cost me three dollars. We have pulled out a service, someone who traveled thirty minutes and thirty minutes back, an hour of operating service without any revenue or without anybody getting on the bus. That throws off the number of passengers per hour. So what we've done is we strengthened our policies, we monitored that, have created the passenger handbook where we inform residents, everyone who's in these situations, that there are consequences for continuous no-shows. And we do apply suspensions. We're fortunate, we've been able to bring down our no-show rate from more than twenty percent down to about ten percent. We're shooting closer to a five percent, which is what typically our fares are in our entire system. Five percent of our entire revenue comes out of fares. Fares do not subsidize the service. Fares pay a small portion of the service that we do. But know that those things are in place that could allow this live system. Because if there's a cancellation, right, it automatically gets removed from the tablet that the drivers have onboard, and another trip can go in there immediately. So at the same time, someone cancels, ten minutes later, someone asks, is there a reservation? Our computerized system that optimizes on an ongoing basis determines, yes, we have a driver available, yes, we can make the reservation and become live. It is technology-driven, that is already there. We're ready to elevate it to the next level once we begin factoring in the outcome of this report.
If I could, thank you, Mr. Renellius. Round wagons back, it's one of the things that's been coming back in my head. I just want to make sure that I'm on the same page, not only with my commissioners, but with y'all as well, in fact, on the business policy. This research, when it comes to considering or thinking about some type of a, creating some type of a facility for, what do you call it, intercity bus route, I'm not really sure how that would work. I know in, you know, again, in the larger urban communities, there's a Greyhound Bus Center that services Greyhound, there's bus depots, the service, there's the local mass transit system. But when it comes to, like you said, Omni, the bus is coming from the valley, going to Houston, and valley going to San Antonio, and valley going anywhere that pass through us, if they have any stop relationships, they're financial for them as well. So they stop in, I don't know where in Devo, I know in Rosario, they always stop, there's that one big Mexican restaurant. All the buses always stop there, they always offload all of their clients, and their clients go and eat at Mexican restaurants. I'm sure there's some sort of financial component to that. I don't see any system other than that type of organic system really, really working here just in purposes of, if you're looking for feedback from us on kind of what our thoughts are, that's my thought on that. I just don't, I don't see the practicality of it. I don't, we don't really see some nice mass transit stops in some places, but oftentimes, they don't, they're not a desirable addition except for the individuals that are actually using them. So I don't, I don't see that, I don't, I just, I don't really have a lot of support for that myself. And I don't want to.
I feel the same way. I've been thinking about it a lot, and I, you said very, very succinctly.
I think there's also some other variables that the rural infrastructure and connectivity to intercity buses is fairly understudied by TechStop.
Oh, okay.
They have realized that there is no systemic way to increase access to intercity buses, connectivity of residents in rural areas. There is pending review of that, some prioritization that's currently taking place, and guidance that we will all receive from TechStop as to how they envision that. Part of the connectivity is, again, Part of the connectivity is, again, improved quality of life in facilities that are open to, one, the environment. There's shelter, there's amenities outside. Other than a restaurant, if you're not eating in the residence, spending money, you're outside hoping that it's not raining or that it's not sunny with your kids in several locations. So that's where we see in gas stations and restaurants. So there are inherent challenges for those that use those services that are more affordable and make that connectivity. So I think there may be opportunities in hopes that you would see it from a different perspective, and I'd be happy to forward additional information. But the importance of connecting, I wanna fly out of Houston, San Antonio, or Corpus Christi, are different options to connect the entire public transit and private transit in the nation for residents here. So there are opportunities that also come with funding support for those kinds of facilities to take away.
And is Greyhound a completely private company?
Yes.
Okay.
They, well, yes, they do operate, they do go after grants. So there's the rural transportation pot of funding that FDA has a small portion of that is set aside for intercity services, and they do go after those grants sometimes. They also partner with rural transit agencies to get them some of those grants, and then they will pay the match if they think that they can be a draw up to get those services. So the report that Martine is referencing is one of the reasons why we have the data, and we're currently doing the statewide intercity bus plan for the state of Texas. And so one of the things that we heard particularly in South Texas was that, you know, yeah, if you need to go to, from Laredo or Brownsville to Houston, or you need to go from Houston to Dallas, or you need to go from Houston to San Antonio, it's pretty easy to get a bus ride. But if you need to get from Beeville to Dallas, it's really hard to access that bus network because the bus network doesn't stop here. Or there's not services to get you there.
Greyhound does stop in Beeville, right?
They do. Or they, I don't think they currently do, I think they've suspended that particular route due to the pandemic.
There's a lot that's on the west end still.
Okay. I was gonna say, I don't know how many people actually have taken Greyhound bus, but I've taken Greyhound bus through rural communities, and they stop in every, at least back in the day, they stopped in every single place where there's an intersection. There's an intersection in the house, that's a five-minute bus stop.
They don't do that anymore. That's been, that's changed, and that's part of, one of the impetus for doing the study. So one of the problems, just like public transit, their focus is on productivity. And what they realized was that, you know, going on little state highways and stopping at every intersection made them slow and unproductive. And so now, you know, you can get a, you can get a non-stop bus ticket from San Antonio to Dallas, and it goes through Austin, it goes through Waco, you know, it goes through Hillsborough, everything, and it doesn't stop at all. But it's, you know, it's a productive service, isn't it? So one of the things about the study that we're doing is how can public transit or even private transit services create routes that can kind of fill in the gaps that have been created? The intercity bus network isn't what it was ten years ago, let alone thirty, forty years ago.
So is then, kind of one of the concepts would be, Real can fill the gap between the more rural communities and the more central nodes that Gray... Because, I mean, there's no other company besides Greyhound, right? In the United States that moves, that has like a layout, like a...
There's like two companies, basically.
Who's the other one besides Greyhound?
I can't remember the name. Trailways. And it still is, but they, I think that's like bus now, a mega bus. One of them's Greyhound, one of them's Trailways. They don't fly as much under the Trailways banner, but they have a menu of services, so. And then, and then you have, you have the intercity carriers from Mexico that do considerable amount of...
They pass through Beeville all the time.
Yeah, every... tornado, Amoeba, so those are, yeah.
I think it's also about looking at the access point of where they get onto the service. Part of the analysis that they're conducting is, what are the, what's the distance from where rural residents live to these access points into the intercity bus system? Is it easier for Greyhound to stop in Chinon and Skidmore? Or is it easier for them to stop in Beeville and then could get Chinon and Skidmore residents into Beeville to get them onto the service? That's the kind of analysis in part that's being conducted to look at how that's to meet the transportation.
I think that's great, and my question is not, and, you know, it's always kind of weird when we're going through a process like this, none of my questions should be interpreted as critical or negative, and I'm just, I'm just thinking about it, it's kind of come to my mind. I forgot what I was gonna say, follow-up on you, coming from Skidmore to the San Antonio, as far as work. I just, I still, I understand what y'all are looking at and what y'all are thinking, and I guess it'd be some type of a public space where private enterprise could utilize as pickup and drop off, that would be different from what is, I mean, the way the world works currently is, it's for us, pantry west, maybe Walmart every now and then, maybe pantry east, these, you know, not subsidized government locations. Are y'all also looking into how, like, the interest of the different, you know, intercity transport companies, what interest they would have in utilizing resources like that? Because if I could make money on the back end with a vendor by bringing the vendor customers, why would I go replace?
Nancy Howen has left the conference.
Oh, you let that sound, but I intended me as the...
Yeah, I'm always joking. Yeah, so, yeah, we are looking at that. Like, one of the things that Greyhound is doing right now is they're purging facilities. So they're looking for places and communities to put their buses, to have their stuff, and generally, there's not much of a business field there. Sure, if you come stop here and it's, you know, it's a Walmart or a corner store, if you're, people are gonna get off the bus and come in and shop. What we're seeing in South Texas sometimes, the issues are, is that, you know, it's the summer, they just wanna get off the bus for a second, and the corner store doesn't really want a busload of people coming in to the corner store and just, just for the air conditioning. So we're seeing some of that. But yeah, they, that's generally what happens, you know, they're not looking to build a facility, they're looking for a facility or a location that they can utilize to make connections. Local services are just to pick people up or drop people off.
I have a burning question, if you will, I've got it written down.
Yeah.
And it may not be appropriate to bring it up at this time, but I think I should. Several years ago, I did an open records request on the maintenance facility here in Beeville. It's on B County property.
Yeah.
It was built by Tech Dot. It is nearing the end of its depreciable life, and what we wanted to do, and they went all the way to a congressman's office in the city, stuck to Tech Dot, we would like to have that facility transferred to B County. We desperately need it for our road bridge maintenance. And my question is, I know you're using it, I've been by there many, many times, and I've talked to the people. Can we supply an alternate facility for staging? Because that is a full maintenance facility, which you're saying that you're possibly in a smaller filter change, which could be done at a local repair shop. We would like to have that facility transferred or given to B County, even if we have to pay a little bit for it, because it, the research idea, the open records request, I spent several months on it, and Mr. Rennellius talked about it. It has reached its lifetime, it's been depreciated, it's right there. So we would like to have that transferred to B County for our use. But we would be willing to work with y'all.
Nancy is now in the conference.
Aha, get her answered now. But we would just be interested in working with Real to come up with another staging area, because that's right next to our maintenance facility, and we will work with them any way possible. And I think I can speak for the whole court once I say this.
I think, you know, part of our, what our, you know, what our study first and foremost is kind of doing, especially the section we're working on right now, is kind of the needs determination for the county. And so we're, you know, we're taking our quantitative data, you know, where, with people that are most likely to use transit, where are they from, where do they live, and what locations need to be served. Then we're talking with you all and trying to use it to determine kind of what the future level of need is in the county. Then we're gonna say, okay, then what type of facility does Real need to support those services? And we can kind of lay that out from all the way up, from a functionality standpoint to a square footage standpoint, things like that. And then the, you know, the, what is essentially a political question, we don't really weigh in on. We can say, here's the different options that are available. Kind of go status quo, you know, for the next however many years until that depreciation is complete, work with the county to buy the facility and try to find a new place, or secure a long-term lease to make improvements to the facility to support transit in the future.
Well, see, it sounds perfectly like the perfect time to do it. Your focus is changing from the type it used to be in the nineties, which was what that facility was set up for, to a new focus. So it sounds like a new building and a new location would serve Real much better, because we could have a place where people can come.
And I'll defer to Tech Dot on the line a little bit for that, you know, I mean, it's their asset, and so they have probably some more detailed information about, you know, depreciation and, you know, what their willingness is to be able to engage in a, you know, business field that's fair to everybody involved. And I think that that's, you know, ultimately, that's, I think, what will happen. You know, good faith efforts from the county and Tech Dot. That would be, you know, and I don't, you know, I don't know, Donna or Nancy, if you wanna chime in on this at all.
Sure, good morning, hi, this is Donna Roberts. The one thing I would like to address is the governing regulations on the grant-funded investment with regard to useful life of that facility. There's still another ten to twelve years left of useful life on that facility before it is fully depreciated. And a facility only is disposed of prior to their use, the end of useful life if the transit agency no longer needs that facility. And that's not the situation that we are in. So Real Transit Board would have to say, yes, this is surplus property, it's no longer needed for transit. And then we could go through a disposal process, but, so it's currently being used for transit, and it still has another ten to twelve years left on our initial investment. So it's not quite at the end of useful life.
Ms. Roberts, I'm not gonna dispute what you're saying, but the open records request that I had, and I didn't have, not have those documents here, or Commissioner Hager has them, I'm thinking for the next five or six years, it is gonna be fully depreciated. I'd like to say, I don't have that in front of me, but that's what I remember. Do you, do you remember what year it was put in?
I'm pulling up, I'm pulling up our summary on that. I was recalling, I was recalling at least another ten years. Realistically, twelve, but we might could steer our way through just ten.
I know that it's been there at least twenty-five years or longer.
Yeah, normally, normally, facility investment is forty years.
Like I say, I know at least twenty-five, possibly thirty-five. Because it was put in...
I don't think it's thirty-five, I think it's more in the range of twenty, twenty-something. It might be like twenty-seven years. And again, the FTA usually requires, I mean, the FTA regulations are of forty years in a capital investment, a facility investment. There are some other, some other languages where you can possibly see your way through a, some, something smaller, but it's gotta be at least, you know, seventy-five to eighty percent of a forty-year lifespan. So that's where I was getting at least another ten years. Vicky, if you're on the line, you might remember exactly the date of the initial investment. I was pulling up my summary.
Yeah.
I think it's from nineteen ninety-two, I think it was.
Nineteen ninety-two.
Okay. So it's got twenty years in.
I'd like to just, yeah, thirty years.
Thirty years in, man.
I'd like to just make sure...
I'm sorry.
That we're all on the same page, that there should be no concern by Real or by Tech Dot with B County wanting to have an understanding of, y'all, this is something that we can argue about, I guess, but it's silly, is I just heard Tech Dot talks about its facility, Real talks about its facility built on B County land. It's all of our facility, and it's all for the benefit of the community. So I'm not getting into a silo, but the bottom line is, B County is absolutely entitled to have a clear understanding of where it stands with respect to this building, and obtaining that clear understanding, the Commissioner Dewitt has worked on doing, and expressing in no uncertain terms what our preferred solution might be with respect to that building is no indication of a lack of support for everything that Real is doing, and no indication of a lack of support for everything that Tech Dot is trying to support Real in doing, in this analysis and review. We love the fact that Real is here, and we like the idea of continuing to work with both of y'all to try to find ways to improve the services that we provide. What Commissioner Dewitt is talking about is with respect to where this building is physically located is there, it's very opportunistic for B County from a B County perspective. We get that there's other parties that have an interest in it, but it's, and we know y'all's position, y'all shared it with us, so please don't take offense, don't get on your heels, don't get, don't get, don't become concerned when we try to get our own clear understanding of the status of this building, and we share with y'all what our hopes and dreams are. If we had federal funding, if we had grant opportunities, if we had a solution that made sense, we can find locations, we can build new buildings, we can provide, just like Commissioner Dewitt just said, we can provide a solution that might meet the future needs of what Real wants to do, as opposed to trying to hold tight to what currently exists. And so it is, it is a somewhat sensitive topic, but I think, and I'm glad you brought it up, Commissioner, I was trying to come up with a way to address it as well. We do have an interest, we have an interest in the building, but we have an actual physical interest in that dirt. And one of the other things that, just, I'm just gonna jump over that now, not give anybody a chance to respond to me, but I'm the judge. And, I'm only joking, I'm only joking. But I just, along those thoughts, and I don't know, I don't know how to say this otherwise, but with respect to the role that the various counties, as far as providing facilities, where the county's actually on the land, is there any credit or, because we've made a point of, we've heard, Live Oak County actually gets hard dollars, and their community gets some additional benefit as a result of that. Do the other, do the other cities, are we apples to apples with the other facilities, locations, those site is locations where those counties are, are we getting credit for the benefit of, maybe not the improvements on the dirt, but the fact that the dirt is where the dirt is, and the operational use that Real has had? Is there, is there any, I would presume that there is somewhere in your financing, in your auditing, or is there? That's just a general question.
No, there isn't. I think it would be important to look at historically, the facilities where it's located...
uh, the facility where it's located and how it was transitioned out of county assets uh, into Real's asset assets. Uh, and, and I have very limited, uh, experience, uh, and deep knowledge, but I do know that at some point, the prior transit system, uh, that the county operated through BCIAA was the transit system that built, with TechStop's support, on county property. So built it onto its own property as the community access. Hence, the documentation that's available that shows the lease warranty of the land and the building, all it reflects is that awareness. B County, when it transitions, when it was closed and services through the court were given back to TechStop, that's where Real came in and absorbed the assets and responsibility for the service. So I think the clarity is absolutely critical for our parties uh, because we too don't have the clarity that, uh, the rug below us, uh, its stability. And so our focus is not a physical structure. Our focus is service to community, B County, as well as the other residents that we are responsible for to the state in bringing public transportation to respond to their needs. Hence, our philosophy is improve services and the type of support we would need to make that happen. Is it specifically about the facility? No. But it cannot be apart from the facility, uh, in meeting those services. For example, we already know during certain, uh, times of the, of, of, of the year when weather impacts, one of the services that's most impacted is dialysis services, right? Because of water, electricity, weather, whatever the case may be, we need to adapt our services to have holding places for passengers to be able to get them out or into facilities based on when they're able to accept them. We also know that transferring of passengers in and out of Bville is a need based on what we've experienced in this window for the last few years. How best we can do that in the existing facility? I'm not sure we can. But I don't believe that that's our anecdotal data sufficient to be able to justify any kind of expansion, reconfiguration, building, accessing other support services that we need in our entire facility. Hence, our approach, let us get technical expertise and help us gather information, qualitative and quantitative, and guide decisions that will be forthcoming. Please hear from Real. We believe that the focus needs and should be, as I hear, on service. The rest are details we need to figure out with shared equal understanding of what those responsibilities and parameters are imposed on each one of us. Because there are regulations and certainly TechStop's available to cite more of those regulations, but there is also responsibility as an entity that we need to uphold uh, and, and accept our role in making a determination, is this facility, another facility, where that takes place? So it is in good spirit that we approach this discussion and how we keep moving forward. But clarity is absolutely, uh, everyone's hope and, and how that is to happen, uh, in the future. What happened in the past was a unique situation unlike anything I have ever experienced, ever, ever. And if I haven't said it enough, ever, we went from Commissioners' Court, Transit Board, assuming service in such a small window. There was no time to look at the details because it was about lack of, or focusing on not having service interruption. And we're proud to say there was no service interruption, right? But we did not secure a lease to know we could build on the facility in the next twenty-five years. We have standing to be debated and to be determined in the future. In the same way that all parties involved have standing to be debated and to be determined in the future. And perhaps debating may be the wrong word, to be discussed.
Yeah, there's, there's no problem with that. I, yeah, we totally agree. What do you, and we've had this discussion before, Mr. Romelios and, and, um, and maybe, uh, Vicky, maybe even last time we spoke, um, I, I don't know how we can be more clear. We fully support everything Real's doing. We want to support, I love the idea of expanding services. I mean, I may, I may love it a lot less when it comes with the price tag. Um, but I, I, I love the idea of expanding services. We can talk all day about, you know, do we need to, I would presume if you're doing a scheduled service, you probably are going to be looking at, if we're gonna have a scheduled service from, again, Normana, uh, ideally you have some sort of covered facility where somebody could park a car and, or be dropped off and sit and wait for the bus outside of the element, I mean, just, you know, covered from, from rainfall. Um, but what is it that, what is it that Real and TechStop need from this Commissioners' Court to have a comfort level that the county is fully one hundred percent behind the efforts of Real and that we're definitely a part of this process? And we can have, like, we can wear multiple hats. I know, I, I understand and I appreciate everything that you said, Mr. Romelios, but the reality is that this Commissioners' Court is not only juggling the needs and desires of, uh, our constituents with respect to real transportation, uh, the opportunities and the benefits that Real brings to us, all the good work that TechStop does in, you know, in B County, um, which we highlighted, I think, like, three, three meetings ago. Um, we're, we're big TechStop fans, we're big Real fans, um, but you have to understand, we also manage counties. We also manage counties with lean funds, and then the funds continue to get leaner. Um, our state legislature, which, you know, directs TechStop's funding as well, continues to constrict and restrict our ability to raise adequate funds to provide services that the state of Texas dictates we have to provide. Um, yeah, we, I, there are so many other things that we juggle on a day-to-day basis. It's important that we, that we think about these things and we have an opportunity to see what comes up. And that's what, I think, again, I, I'm not trying to speak for Commissioner Dewitt, but, um, but that's just, in, in our perfect world, we find a better location for Real and we have this building for, uh, our, our, uh, maintenance, uh, our road and bridge department, but that may not be a realistic solution for ten or twelve years. Maybe it is, maybe it's not, I don't know, but that is, so y'all know, there, so there should be no, no question. If we're looking for clarity, we one hundred percent support what you guys do, but we do have this interest and we have a basis. There's a justification for it. It's not to try to just divest Real of, of, of its facility here, um, at all. It's, it's how can we improve what y'all do for our constituents and also provide improvements to what we do, uh, internal departments, constituents? And, and I agree with you. It's gonna be on your shoulders, his, his report may come, it's your report now. It's all you, it's all you. You know, there, there, their report may come back and say, oh, the level of services is fine, there's no additional need and there's nothing needed to come, and Real says, well, we're happy with this facility and we don't really want to move it and there's nothing that we can do, and that's okay. But, uh, but again, you know, uh, I, this is the third time I've said it, so I know I'm repeating myself, so we're gonna be quiet.
So, uh, this is Donna Roberts with TechStop, Martine, if you don't mind, I'll, I'll say a few things. Um, and I certainly didn't mean to sound divisive earlier. I was just trying to lay out the, what the government regulations are that we are responsible for with regard to that asset. So, um, you know, one of the reasons for commissioning this, this study that, that KFH group is doing is to, let's look at the service, what are the needs and what does that mean from a facility standpoint? So the, the useful life governing that facility, um, means there is still useful life in that facility. Is it impossible to get out of the facility prior to meeting useful life? It's possible if there is another better solution. If it is determined that that facility no longer meets the needs of transit, then there's other decision points, right? Do we enhance that same facility? Do, is there another location in the county that makes more sense? It, that, that's all what this study is pointing to, is what is a future investment in a, in, in service and the facilities that support that service mean, and how does that impact the current facility? So, um, I, I just, just wanted to make that clear. We, we're gonna fund what is, is possible to fund and what is, uh, practical to fund. Um, but the service level, TechStop does not get involved in defining the service, uh, that the, the transit providers, um, offer to the community. That is, those are local decisions. We come in from the funding agents and say, here's the funding to support that.
Nancy, so it's about the less than conference.
With all of that. Um, and, and we are certainly wanting to work together with Real and the county to, to do what makes sense. I was just bringing up the fact that we can't get out of that building, by the way, according to the government regulation. It is at the tail end of its useful life, but it's not quite at useful life. And there are, there are procedures that have to be worked through in order to do something different with that facility. Um, so just, I just wanted to clarify that. We're certainly wanting to all work together. It's gonna take some time. We need to go through the study. We need to see what the results are and what the county's appetite is at that time, um, for, for whatever that facility supports you.
It is now in the conference.
I'll let, I'll let Martine, uh, or, or anyone else to jump in there. I just, I just wanted to say that, that those, those government regulations do play a part in all of this and that's, that's where we come in. We can't just say, okay, we can let go of the building.
Thank you, Ms. Roberts. Uh, we appreciate that. I, I, I appreciate, I understand, I understand what you're saying. No worries, no problems at all. Um, two questions, I think, if I could sum up. Uh, one, what, what else do y'all need from the county? What insight, what, what additional feedback? Do you have any, uh, surveys? Is there something that, that, that we can, we can bring to bear to provide additional data or input, uh, with respect to the study? And two, what's the timeframe for the study?
Yeah, uh, I can answer that. So, we, you know, the, the study has kind of been, in, in some respects, kind of waiting for this meeting. Um, and so we, we're, um, have a draft, um, technical memorandum. There's a couple of, of reports as part of the study before we develop a plan. It is talking about, uh, um, needs based on kind of quantitative and then qualitative data that we've gotten from you today. And then we have a, a third technical memorandum that we're gonna write that is really focused more on, on the facilities and the facility needs. Um, and then we would kind of combine all those memorandum into kind of one final analysis, it would be a plan. Um, our goal would be to, to have, have this done pretty quick turnaround uh, because we've, we've been kind of stalled for a while now. So, uh, our, our goal is probably into February, um, to, to have plans put together. And I think that, you know, you, you kind of said it's all on, on your shoulders. Yeah, we understand. I think part of, part of what we want to do is, like I said, what are the needs? What is the vision moving forward? What type of facility is needed to support that? Then also lay out the information of, you know, what is the regulatory framework around, uh, the building? What is the regulatory framework around the land and the asset? And, and what, um, you know, what possible alternatives are there in terms of solving this issue? Again, it's gonna be more high level, but at least I think what the report will do is, is have everybody kind of on the same playing field with all the same information, uh, you know, in terms of, you know, when, when is this depreciation time limit completed? Um, you know, all of those things that, that we will lay out. And then, you know, you all can, can, can work together based on all of that data and information to make the best decision that's right for B County. Um, and so that's our, that's our goal, is, is to kind of lay out what the needs are, the facility needs are, um, and, and, and help give you all the, the, the information so you're all kind of at the same playing field and then you can make the decisions. Maybe, maybe you want that facility earlier and there's a way to set up a deal with TechStop to, to get them out of that and, and not disrupt service and get Real into a, a new facility here or something like that. That's, that's certainly an, uh, you know, one of the scenarios that could play out. Uh, one, they stay kind of status quo until it's useful life. One would be, uh, you know, you find a new facility and they, you know, sign a long-term lease. I mean, there's, you know, I, just the three off the top of my head, those are the ones that kind of are, is the, is the kind of universe of options that would be available. Um, and so how, how those would work out and, and, and what decisions best meet the needs of, of the county, uh, as, as well as TechStop and Real, that's, that's for you all to, to kind of work through and decide. But I think, you know, having something that, that kind of lays out all of the information in kind of one succinct document, that's what we're hoping to have to you all in February.
I think it's great. I think it's incredibly valuable. And I really appreciate TechStop and, and Real, not only for including us in the process. I speak on behalf of all the Commissioners, you and me, but I'm here. And, uh, yeah, I appreciate y'all bringing us into the process. I appreciate you giving us the opportunity, uh, again, to communicate our support for Real, uh, in, in the effort that you did. And give us the opportunity as well to, uh, try to articulate, um, the, the various interests that we have with respect to, uh, everything that's here. But I'm really looking forward to the, the study and I, I presume with Real, it's a, Real is paying for the study.
Tech, TechStop, actually.
TechStop, will we be provided a coffee?
TechStop.
Yeah.
Absolutely. We, we hope once the report is finalized, this is not, uh, the, the end.
Yeah, okay, I understand. Yeah, it's an ongoing contingency.
As I have come before the court previously, uh, where I mentioned we were doing this study, right? I remember that. Of course, everybody remembers, just like, we hope Commissioners, they all remember six, six, eight, three, one, five, eight. There you go.
There you go.
That was six, six, eight, three, one, five, eight, right? Six, six, eight, three, one, five, eight.
And that's the schedule arrives with Real?
But, but know that, um, I think, um, I, I am most appreciative of your time, beyond anything I, I truly am. I, I think that it's, it's important to note that, uh, when you, as Commissioners and you have responsibility, uh, to those that elected you to office, uh, that know that, um, we too are attempting to spread all our competing priorities and provide the highest quality service to everyone that, that we serve. Uh, know that we are not a hundred percent fully funded through grants. That is not the case. Every year, under care, the current conditions, the blessings that has happened, it is covered at a hundred percent. That's not gonna be there forever. What we saw months ago is that there are opportunities coming where we must prepare in our service area, including B County, towards the future for the next twenty to forty years. How will that begin looking like? Hence, our effort to engage in this particular discussion. We do see and want to continue a strong partnership with B County, uh, as we go through this transition of whatever it may be and how it will look like. We just implore that it be data-driven so that the service maintains the focus on how best to improve the quality of life of the residents. best to improve the quality of life of the residents. We know that there are opportunities where everywhere else, where we have facilities, they are all owned by Real, uh, with financial support from TechStop. That is certainly, for you to be aware, in terms of clarity, is always our preference. We don't like to rent, right? Because then the owner may change their mind ten years from now. And we know that there are federal investments that we see as a solution to part of our dilemma that's gonna require that, uh, solid, uh, footing, but we wanna make sure that you're aware of that.
Yeah, thank you, and let me clarify real quick, and just make sure I understand, lots of clarification going on. Uh, the, the other facilities that Real operates, you, they're, they're facilities that Real owns.
Uh, uh.
They're not, they're, it's not land, it's not the situation like we have in B County, where B County owns land.
This is not like anywhere else. We don't have anywhere else where we have.
Okay, I thought, I, okay, I thought you said that they're all the same.
Well, B County is, is unique.
And, and two things, if you will. Depreciation can be bought out, the remaining depreciation based upon the original purchase price, okay? So that's, that's a possibility.
Yeah.
And then I'll leave you with this note, and it was in your slide earlier, that's the nineteen ninety's facility, and now we're looking at twenty twenty-one, in the next twenty years. I'm thinking that when your study comes out, I'm anticipating a new type of facility, a new vision, a new function, a new functionality of a, of completely new building. So I'll leave you with that, too.
And we, we count on the continued partnership with the county as we look towards the future in their respective way.
Absolutely. Y'all have done such an excellent job, from the administration to the operation. If TechStop can hear this, Real's doing a great job, year over year, um, even starting under a little stressful, uh, circumstances, uh, B County's better for Real's presence.
Absolutely, and I'm, I'm hearing no complaints. And there are people out there that complain because it's too windy, because the sun's too bright. I'm hearing no complaints, so y'all are doing good, sir, I, I applaud you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Remember it, six, six, eight, three, one, five, eight.
What was, what was that again? Six, eight, eight, three, one, five, eight, if you need to schedule a trip.
There you go. I'm not trying to cut this off, is there anybody else that, that you're closing, or?
Uh, I, I left my, uh, contact information up on the screen, I'll, I'll leave it up after the, after the, uh, meeting. If you all have any questions, uh, throughout this project, or even after this project, we're always, you know, my, you can always drop me a line, I'll, I'll, we'll always respond. Um, and, um, we, you know, we really look forward to, to completing our end of this project, and I, I think that, you know, um, it was, it was a pleasure meeting all of you and the county Commissioners, and I think that, you know, this is, it's gonna be a help to all of you, you're, you're all, everybody, all parties involved are operating in good faith and, and really wanna do something good for the community, and I think that that's, uh, you know, that's all you can ask for, and, and this is a unique situation. Um, I won't say it's, you'd be surprised, there's, there are other places, even in Texas, that, that have gotten into pickles over this, this type of, uh, uh, situation, maybe not exactly the same, but, um, but yeah, there, there's, there's a way to, to resolve this, and, and, um, we will do our best to, to create a, a plan and a report that, that will help you all make the best decision for your county.
That's great, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you all so much. If there's nothing further?
I'll make a motion.
Oh, did you wanna, yeah, if there's anything further, just make a motion.
I'll second that.
Did you make a motion with KFH?
Has left the conference.
Well, uh, we, we don't want Mr. Hudson to be alone and leave you in the conference. I have a motion to second any further discussion here, if others in favor. Thank you, gentlemen, for being here today, thanks, ma'am, thank you for everybody that's still on the phone, I'm hanging up on you now.
Thanks. Yeah, thanks to all so much, it was a good conversation today, thank you.
Yes, yes, ma'am, I really appreciate it, y'all take care, be safe.
Has left.
Oh. Hopefully I get, 'cause we have no meeting here.
No, do we?